...for himself, but for the younger children that use the playground as well. So I thought it was really a great initiative on his part to take the time to write us this letter. So we invited him in tonight to say, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and also maybe share a couple of his thoughts on Drummond, and then we'll tell him what we're thinking of doing with Drummond. So, Henry, you want to say a few words?
The first issue about Drummond Playground is that it's falling apart.
People are agreeing with you, Henry. Don't worry about that. That's a, they understand.
And like and directness.
Yeah.
The tire swing has been taken out, and the trampoline has been taken out, too.
And those are some real concerns. I understand that.
Taken out because they were dangerous? Is that why?
No, I think they were taken out because they broke.
Okay.
Okay.
Another issue is we need to make things safe, is we need to make things safer. We should widen the tube slide just in case. You never know. Someone could get stuck.
I've been stuck.
For my last issue, Drummond needs to get fixed up. The rusty metal should be painted, and the wood needs to be refreshed.
Excellent, Henry. And, you know, Henry also in his letter talked about a lot of other things, and again, some of the things that impressed me were his concerns about the younger children that, that use the playground and the potential for getting splinters and getting hurt. So, really appreciate your letter. So, what we'd like to do is give you a certificate tonight, a certificate of appreciation, and presented to Henry Schutzbank, in appreciation for volunteer to lead the reciting of Pledge of Allegiance at the Board of Selectmen meeting. May your enthusiasm and interest in local government remain with you for many years to come. Presented tonight by the Board of Selectmen, August 15, 2016. Thank you, Henry. We have sworn in some, a new firefighter, and we're going to swear in two promotions for this office, so you may have, someday we may be swearing you in here. Okay. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes from July 18, 2016. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I hope that we approve the minutes. I wasn't ready, I was, excuse me. From July 18, 2016, open session minutes as written.
I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next is a, as I've mentioned earlier, a great privilege and an honor to be able to swear in a, a new firefighter this evening, William Lynch. Is Chief McCarthy here with us tonight? Here he is.
So, greeting everyone to the Lynch family, congratulations. It's a pleasure for me to be able to swear in Phil Lynch, if you want to come over. Billy actually finished his probation, probation every year, July 20 of this year. Bill did quite well at the academy, he was above average at the fire academy. His scores through the exam was ninety-three percent.
Congratulations.
He did quite well on the diverse, he was much more than most people. So Billy has been with us, obviously, for the, he's already been, had letters written on his behalf, on, on the service that he's provided to people in North Andover. So I just thought that was important to point out. We have a little tradition that we'd like to bring back here, so history of the badge. Retired Deputy Chief Drummond White put that together for us today. I was actually going to have him read it because I forgot my glasses, but Bill's father's letting me use this. So, Knockville Fire Department Badge 29. Badge 29 is issued to permanent firefighter William F. Lynch, having successfully completed your probation, probation every year on 20 July 2016. William M. Aminsky was the first firefighter to have worn Badge 29 from 1971 until his promotion to lieutenant in 1979. Lieutenant Aminsky continued to serve his department until his retirement in 2012, a period of forty-one years. Lieutenant Aminsky also served as Secretary Treasurer of Local 2035 for thirty-seven years. Mike Long was the next member of the department to wear Badge 29. Firefighter Long served from 1976 to his retirement last year in 2015, when he retired a period of thirty-nine years. We trust that you, Bill, will wear Badge 29 with pride and honor with the knowledge of those who came before you, have worked to make this job better for you, and that you are entrusted to remember those who came before you as you prepare the way for those who will come after you. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
You want to wait for the gentleman to come up or should he come up now?
I swear an effort. Come up if you can. You wouldn't mind raising, this is the best part of my job, raising your right hand and repeating after me. I state your name.
Aye.
Solemnly promise.
Solemnly promise.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
Sincerely.
Sincerely.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Veteran incumbent.
Veteran incumbent.
Upon me.
Upon me.
As firefighter.
As firefighter.
For the town of North Andover.
For the town of North Andover.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Please. Do this, just have you sign right there from here.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That was the fastest pinning I think we've ever seen. Because he knows how to put it on.
I told his father, don't try and bend it, slip it down.
You've got quite a pedigree with that badge. Good luck. That's great.
Okay, so next up, we'll be looking for Chief Gray and swearing in Lieutenant Dan Lannan. Chief?
Yep.
As far as, I don't have the history of the badge. I can give you the history behind the badge. Lieutenant Lannan is a twenty-eight-year veteran of the police department, twenty-two years spent on patrol. Of those twenty-two years, he spends six, I believe, as a member of this board. And after he spent the six years, he decided to try to promote, which he did, and became sergeant, and worked the early next shift. From then on, he obviously decided to promote again and successfully made it to lieutenant. One thing about Lieutenant Lannan is he's a former combat medic. So, a few years ago, we tapped him to be in charge of our First Aid CPR Medical Responder Training, and he actually, along with Lieutenant Folds, got the NACAM program off the ground. So he's an excellent resource, he's assigned to the Operations Division now, and is doing an outstanding job. Lieutenant, I mean Sergeant Daly is a eight, nine-year member of the police department, another valuable resource. He's been assigned to the DEA Task Force for the last seven years, and in that, he works in another cover capacity, doing, I would say, high-risk operations, seizures and whatnot with DEA and other law enforcement groups. As an accomplished detective, he's responded to numerous scenes and assisted, and as a supervisor, he's going to be an invaluable resource, assigned to the shift he's on, which is a split shift, assisting with patrol and kind of going back to his roots. So, the history behind the badge is these two offices, which are awesome, awesome addition to the ranks of the police department. Thank you.
Again, this is the best part of my job, and having worked with Lieutenant Lannan on the Board of Selectmen, he was always prepared, just, you're as good a police officer as you are a selectman. If you don't mind raising your right hand and repeating after me. I state your name.
State your name.
Solemnly. They won't let me.
I, Daniel Lannan.
Solemnly promise.
Solemnly promise.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
Sincerely.
Sincerely.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Veteran incumbent.
Veteran incumbent.
Upon me.
Upon me.
As a lieutenant.
As a lieutenant.
In the North Andover Police Department.
In the North Andover Police Department.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Okay. It's plenty of DMQ for anyone.
Oh, easy for you to say.
Yeah.
She's too short.
And again, it's my, this is the best part of my job, and if you don't mind raising your right hand and repeating after me. I.
Aye.
State your name.
Sean Daly.
Solemnly promise.
Solemnly promise.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
Sincerely.
Sincerely.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Veteran incumbent.
Veteran incumbent.
Upon me.
Upon me.
As a sergeant.
As a sergeant.
In the North Andover Police Department.
In the North Andover Police Department.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Please.
Congratulations, gentlemen, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
I was going to say the same thing.
So, if you just take one more consent item, we're going to, communications, we're just going to review for Henry the plan for Drummond. So, we'll get a plan for something. So, normally, we would take any capital improvement programs at the end, or projects at the end of the meeting, but given the fact that Henry's here, and he had an interest in Drummond Playground, we're going to take this kind of out of order, and we're going to have a quick update on the project that will be at Drummond Playground starting in 2017.
So, the Community Preservation Committee asked that we sponsor, not the health one, asked that we sponsor improvement to all of our playgrounds in the community, so a subcommittee was formed, we identified all of the playgrounds, and then worked with a consultant to prioritize improvements on all those playgrounds, and have gotten commitment from the CPC to improve those playgrounds based on need. We've already, we're in the middle of what is the third project, the fourth project is Drummond Playground. So, coming up next year, the CPC will approve $200,000 based on the plan to begin to make improvements. There'll be community input from other group of folks who will be involved in making the updates, and that'll be many, because quite frankly, it's our most widely-used playground, and the town has sort of pre-committed to making sure that $200,000 will be set aside to make the improvements, many of which I think will address the concerns that you've identified. So, we appreciate the recognition that work needs to be done, and I want to let you know that within about twelve months or so, that that work is going to begin.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, Joyce, voting information.
A very brief update, we have a new, easy to, as easy as one, two, three voter website. It's attached to our website as well, but it's very easy for people to remember. All they have to do is go to that website, you can check to see if you're a registered voter, you can see what ballots you have available. If you're not registered to vote, it's an online portal that lets you register, and also the fact that you need an absentee ballot forms are right on there with just one click away. So this is something new, new and very easy to use, and of course, you're going to be hearing a lot from us about upcoming elections. Just a reminder that Friday is the last day to register to vote or to change party affiliation. We'll be doing voter registration until noon at the town hall offices, and then the police department is graciously, they will have the forms and also this information till 8:00 PM.
And they can do it online, too?
Yeah, absolutely, and this, yeah, online works very, very well, it comes through right to us, we certify, could not be easier. And also for people to be able to check and see if they're registered to vote, or if that doesn't work, an email to any one of us, we're happy to check voter status, we have plenty of time to, you know, still get people registered. And sixteen and seventeen-year-olds can also now preregister to vote, and as soon as they turn eighteen, it automatically comes through the voter registration process, so young people can get, and we're having quite a few, you know, people actually that will be, even though they won't be eighteen by the November election, they'll still get them on the voter rolls as soon as they turn eighteen, so that's very exciting as well.
Anybody who's watching this meeting, if you're at home, hop onto your smartphone or your computer, and you can visit the Secretary of State's website to register.
Yep, that one, two, three voter dot com gets you, pulls up all the links, and just a click away, and couldn't be easier. And that's thanks to Bill Campbell, the city clerk in Woburn, who's just a genius to come up with something, because people were having a hard time trying to relate to, where do I go, or what do I have to do, so that works.
But again, though, don't they, their address, we found that that's a problem, that they don't realize, that if they moved even within the town.
Exactly, right.
Should we register?
Right. And, you know, that, and that's an email away, I get them every day, you know, we've moved from here to here, these family members are with us, makes it, could not be easier, and then we send out confirmation, so. Or if you've moved from another community, even though you were registered to vote there, you have to re-register when you're new to a community, so.
But isn't there a six-month, though?
People, in the, in the state election, there's a six-month timeframe that, say, if you've been gone less than six months, even from North Andover, and you've moved somewhere else, you can still vote here, under the six-month provision, so. And there will be early voting updates for the November election, that's starting to be formulated, so.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Okay, next, under Communications and Announcements, we have an update on the electrical aggregation plan.
So, Mr. Chairman, as the board is aware, we went into town meeting with the support of the board to start the process for electrical aggregation. We cleared town meeting, was great support by town meeting, I mentioned the last meeting, that the formal steps will begin in not-so-distant future. I wanted to provide the board with a, an outline of those steps, takes some time, a number of months, quite frankly, before we complete the process, and ultimately, we'll go up to procure electricity on behalf of the residents. If for some reason, when we go through that process, we're unhappy with their responses, if it doesn't yield savings to the residents, then we don't do it, and we go back into the market at a later time, and keep on doing that until such time that we feel comfortable with it. So I'm providing the board with an overview or an outline of the next steps. The gentleman from Colonial Gas, you may have met him last time, Bernie Lynch, the former city manager in Lower, will be in at the next meeting to provide you some level of additional detail, but I wanted to update the board that, give you a little heads-up this is coming, and provide you an overview of the next steps. Really, the next step is the posting of a plan, so that the public can review that plan. It's somewhat technical, so it's something that we get posted with the clerk's office and on the town's website. Ultimately, the board will need to adopt that plan, but we're going to give you a plan to review to do that, and then any other community feedback we receive from publicly posting that plan, we'll provide back to the board of selection, so you'll have that pride of the vote. After the plan is adopted, it goes off to the state. So, there's a period of time, pretty significant number of months, from when the board takes its next step, which is adopting of this aggregation plan, to when it goes to the state and comes back, quite frankly. The communication process, again, doesn't begin for a number of months, till we get a little closer, and then we'll have everything from cards to news media to other circulations to make sure the residents understand their options, whether they want to opt out of the plan, whether the plan makes sense for them. That service, by the way, it's important to the board to know, continues beyond after selecting a vendor, when we select a alternative provider for supply, if a resident has a question about what that means, there'll be a 1-800 number for them to call, so if they, after the process completes, if they have a question. They still would call the utility company if they have national grid-specific questions, but if they have other questions about our program, there'll be a 1-800 number for them to call to answer any questions. So, next meeting, you will see our consultant here to ask, to be able to answer more a detailed question, but I wanted to provide just some of the backup anyways.
But again, the phone calls that we're all getting almost every day about saving on our electric bill are not part of this program.
They are not, as, you will not hear from us until, I would, you'll know, I will let you know when you're going to hear from us, but you will not hear from us for the balance of the calendar year, at a minimum.
And we'll also put that out as a public announcement, too, right?
Yeah.
That phone calls will be coming through, or, I thought we discussed that, that we put them on the, on the website, maybe I'll think of something else, but I thought we discussed that, just to let people know that the calls that they would be getting are legitimate calls.
When it's, when we're doing it?
Yeah.
Oh, no, there'll be a pretty elaborate media.
Right.
And we'll go into that at the next meeting, everything from, again, postcards to the website, to a town-wide call, but anything a resident receives as relates to alternative supply of electricity today is not the town.
Right.
And it probably will become very clear when it is the town, but at this point, it's not.
I just didn't want people to be confused.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Okay, next, I think, is something on everybody's mind, is an update on drought conditions and how we're dealing with it at the town level. Bruce, come on up.
Thought everybody was here to see that, all those guys out there. Just listen.
They were.
Well, as you know, we're in a, we're in a drought watch, and what that means is that the lake is about ten, five to ten percent below normal for the season. In other words, each season, you know, you get a little bit more, as we go into August, you get a little bit more, you can go a little lower in the lake. So, we're still holding that, we're still on the drought watch. What does that mean? That means it's volunteer water restrictions, reduce outside water use. We're recommending reduce outside water use between 8:00 PM and 6:00 AM. We suggest irrigating only every third day, washing of vehicles, driveways, patios, houses to be limited or eliminated if need be. Eliminate using any town water to fill pools, obviously, and that's not the pool season yet. And eliminate or reduce irrigation outside use of town, school properties, buildings, and fields, in which we've, we've done that. We're adhering to these things that I already mentioned. We've notified, obviously, the town manager and the Board of Selectmen, we've had press releases, we've put notices on North Andover Cam, the website, we have the signs out, we've seen the signs around town, and we sent letters to customers with high use on irrigation meters only. We're still monitoring the lake level weekly, as I said, we're still on a watch. However, projecting no rain and current pumping rates, we could be approximately ten to twenty percent below normal line, normal by the end of the month, which means we'd go into the next level, which would be a drought warning, and that's mandatory restrictions. And I think if anybody was here in 2002, I believe that was the last time we went into some of those mandatory. The bylaw requires that the vote of your board would, would be, that's required to go into that. Again, that'd be the second phase, some more extensive notification, what we'd probably do is do like a robocall, that type of thing, monitoring warnings, and of course, fines. That's what the bylaw, the management plan requires. The DEP has declared a drought warning for the area, but that doesn't mean that the town has to go into that, because it's determined by our water use permit, and with our water use permit, that we were permitted maybe so many years to withdraw from the lake, that refers to our drought management plan, so we're in compliance with everything there. The only change would be if the, if DEP declares a drought emergency, and then required by the bylaw, the town would have to go into a drought emergency. I don't think we're close to that by, by any stretch of imagination, but that is, that's a complete restriction of outside use of water, a lot of other things. So, what can we do, other than the rain dance, and I hope you've all done that every night? The best way for individuals to help with this is to voluntarily do the things that we've asked, to get the pumping rate down. We're hoping to, to reduce that pumping rate, if, that's going to give us a big help if we don't get rain. We're hoping we have rain. I have a couple of things planned with my daughter over the next couple of weeks, and we usually get together at rain, so I feel confident. But, in all seriousness, we really, if people are listening to this, and I hope the message gets out, that trying to do the volunteer measurements, we've had good response for, like, North Andover Country Club, I've been in communication with them, they're doing their part. We've talked to some of the other large users, and they're all doing their part right now, so.
So, will we have you back on the 29th of this month for an update?
No, I'm keeping my fingers crossed. I'm going to be positive, but.
Okay.
If you see Bruce, it's not a good sign.
Right.
Okay. Let's hope we don't see Bruce.
Yeah, it's not a good.
Although we'd like to see you, let's hope we don't see you. All right, thank you. And I think, are there any questions for Bruce, or any comments? So I think then if there are no further comments or questions on the drought, we're going to delve right into the textile recycling program.
So Bruce can give us an update. Bruce Ray and I met with the folks from Way Zero, I mentioned it at last meeting, this concept, we had a quick back and forth, I thought Bruce has reviewed the program in more detail, has come back with a recommendation which I support, Mr. Skoskis is here from Way Zero, he can provide us some additional detail as well, but it's an opportunity to explain the program. We've given you a presentation within the packages that describe sort of the program, but Steve, if you want to come forward, maybe it's a good time for you to give, you can up, share there, Bruce, from the side.
Yep.
To talk a little bit about the specifics of the program, and then, whatever question you may have.
My, my only question is, I read in the, so it really wouldn't take off for twelve months from the time of inception, I'm confused.
Well, can we, can we just, can we just give an overview, just for the folks in there?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I thought that was done at the last meeting, my apologies.
But I just figured it's, it's worth saying.
And just, and just a little background on it, when I first came here, we, we had a textile recycling, you know, you might have seen it, I think it's Planet, something or other, and it was in a box that was at the drop-off center at the, at the town garage, but now, and then, and then they moved it up to 120 Washington Street, and then those companies kind of went out of business, you know, we'd get some money back from there. And, you know, it wasn't the most convenient. And, you know, it wasn't the most convenient situation, you know, and I think this is much more convenient, if somebody wants to do this. It's curbside recycling, very convenient for people. And it doesn't mean that people won't go out and do their regular textile recycling at some of the other boxes around town, but I, it makes it very, very convenient. But the best part about it is it takes those things that normally would go in the trash. These aren't things that are usually recycled, these are things that go in the trash. And so, that will take those out of the waste stream and save us some money and reduce our waste. So I think that's, and that's a real plus for it.
So Steve, if you could introduce yourself to the board, and then give just a two-minute overview of what the program looks like in terms of some specifics, that'd be great.
Will do, thank you very much. Steve Luszkowski with Waste Zero. We are a North Andover business, we're located at 300 Mass Ave in North Andover. We focus exclusively on helping cities and towns increase recycling and reduce trash. Across the United States, about 85% of textiles, that shoes, shirts, socks, belts, drapes, pillows, anything you can think of that's in a textile category, 85% of it is thrown away in the trash. 95% of it is recyclable. Only 5% of that is actual waste. In Massachusetts, we do slightly better, but overall, nationally, it's over 70 pounds per person per year thrown away in the trash. Have yet to meet anyone who cops to throwing one pound away, but when you do a study, you find out that at the incinerator here in town, it's about 6% of the material burned is reusable textiles. That could go to people who are in need, that could be used, reused in insulation, that could have another good purpose. So, the idea is to provide residents an option, a free option, to recycle the material curbside. As Bruce mentioned, there are options today to take it to a location, but that has only captured about 15% of the material. The idea is not to go after that 15% of material and take it away from Planet Aid or whoever has taken Planet Aid's place. It's to get the 85% of the material that's, it's just not convenient enough for folks to take it to that drop box. It's to give people a curbside option, because one of the things we've learned over the last decades is, if you make recycling at the curbside, or available at the curbside, people will do more of it. So, if we take textiles recycling and make it available to residents, like regular recycling, free of charge, and free to the town, it's something that can increase the recovery of that material. And as Bruce mentioned, every ton that doesn't go into the trash is saving you $60. And the way this program is structured, the collector, Simple Recycling, a specialized collection company for textiles and only textiles, will pay $20 a ton to the town. So you'll save $60 a ton and earn $20 a ton. Bags will be distributed to residents that are bright pink, you can't miss them, for the recycling. If people need more, they just call and they're sent more bags for free. It's really designed to help people increase recycling, reduce disposal, save money for the taxpayers, and earn some additional revenue. The overall impact is not enormous, because it's only 6% of the trash stream, but it's about $3,000 a year. That's a low estimate. I would not be surprised if you doubled that, or if not more, for a variety of factors I can get into, if people are really interested in being bored about textiles recycling. But it's a small positive impact, but also environmental impacts and other things that aren't included in the numbers.
I love it.
Because, is it carpets? Is that considered textiles?
Not typically. So carpet is not typically considered, carpet is recyclable, but not typically in a, certain carpets are recyclable, but not typically in this program, no matter.
Needs to fit in the bag, right?
Needs to fit in the bag.
It needs to fit in the bag.
Needs the bag.
The bag is this color, but, sorry.
I have to stand up, it's big.
Oh, that's a great size. I mean, because I, you know, I always donate St. Vincent de Paul, my clothes and all of that, but curtains, old pillows, those types of things, you're right, they go in the garbage. Old towels, you know?
He's actually got a list on page 10 of the presentation.
Jewelry.
Yeah, that's, that kind of surprises me.
Plates, dishes.
Tools, yeah.
I think it's great.
So, how would the pickup work? Would that be, would it be a weekly pickup, or would it be an on-demand pickup? How would that work?
So it follows the town's recycling routes. It's not on-demand, there's a box truck or a van, depending on the material flow, that will follow, doesn't follow the recycling truck, but it follows the same recycling route. And so, the set-out rate is about 1%, but that's a Midwestern rate, where recycling rates are lower, so I would expect maybe a 2% to 3% set-out. So, it's not as, it won't be as slow as recycling collection, because they're not stopping at every house, but there's an established route that people will know, okay, here's my collection day, and the truck will be there to collect the material.
And I have to imagine there's times of year that's, there's peaks at certain, when we're doing spring cleaning or changing your wardrobe for the fall.
But you can call, right?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Miller.
So you won't, I'm sorry, you won't have to call in advance, it'll follow the established recycling route. You'll get a bag, you'll fill it, if you need more bags, there'll be a method for you to get more bags, and those are free. If you choose not to use it, you choose not to use it. Not everybody's going to use it. This is not a donation, so you won't get a receipt like you will with some, some of those vendors. It's not intended to replace those folks, it's intended to provide a convenience for those folks who want recycling textiles today, because they just, they don't have the time, they don't have, you know, we're all challenged.
With some of the donation, you know, you donate clothes, they don't take an old pillow, you don't really want to donate a old pillow or something, anyway, you know?
Have old sneakers that you wouldn't.
Old sneakers you wouldn't donate, right, yeah. I love it, I think it's great. I think it's an additional service that we can provide to the community, and I think it will be well-received and well-used.
But the thing that is, might be a little confusing, so it doesn't have to be clothing or pillows that are good for someone else to use, can they be torn and tattered?
Yes, very much so.
Can be trashed.
And so, well, that's, that's one of the advantages of this program.
So just so people understand, it's, you know, yes, it's the towel that's all ripped and frayed, that, no, nobody else wants it, maybe a shelter for the animals, but that's what you'll be looking for that as well, not something that someone's going to go to a country or where people need clothes, it's not that. It can be that, but it's not exclusive.
Correct. So one of the barriers to the drop-off recycling, frankly, is the embarrassment factor, that my wife might tell you that I have some clothes that we would be embarrassed to donate. I wouldn't admit to it, but my wife might, might blame that on me. That can go in the bag, because the bag is, you can't see through, your neighbors can't see through the bag. It is recyclable, but am I really going to go to Goodwill and drop it off and have somebody hold it up and say, well, okay, this is going to go in the grind-up bin? A lot of people don't do that, or the bad sneakers or something like that. They're completely reusable, though, or recyclable, and can be ground up. So this program allows people to do that. You have a home for it now, you put it in the bag, doesn't matter how nasty it is, as long as it's not oil-soaked and could burn because of that. They'll take it, grind it up, and use it for insulation in a car or a home.
When you break a dish at dinner, you put it in that bag, right? You block that Teflon on your pots and pans.
I think it's, yes, right, I mean, yes, don't use metal on meddling.
This is, this is, yeah, it's a great way to remove.
I think it's a great program.
So what are our next steps then? What's the next thing that we should expect? So we've discussed the program, what's the next thing we should expect?
I will talk with the folks about the contract that does this. Again, it's no cost contract. From our perspective, if there was, there isn't a great return, but again, it's really a service at no cost with some turn around. We'll have a conversation about contract for this service, and we're waiting for any feedback to see if there's any reason I wouldn't execute a contract, but based on the feedback to date, we'll be proceeding with executing a contract to do this. And then, would, what steps would you take in terms of communication with the community?
Sure, so the, and also to the selectwoman's question, the start time is three months, from when 40,000 households have signed, have agreed to be in the program. So there's 8,000 households serve for recycling now. We're having conversations with quite a number of other communities in North Andover. If you chose to do it, would be the first community on the East Coast to implement curbside textiles.
Well, how about that, with trail lasers on top of it?
Absolutely, so.
Yeah, I keep a new report.
So we.
Some company is staying off both sides.
That's great, and that happens in many communities, and that's, that's from our perspective, completely fine. The, the goal is to serve the town and get that material out of the trash. So the communication to the residents would be, if you're starting on a date, would be, say, three weeks before, a mailer is sent to all residents explaining the program. A week after that, so two weeks out, they receive another mailing with a bag, and then additional correspondence goes out. Then, after the program starts, another mailer that says, hey, here's how the program's going, here's what you can do. So it's, three mailers would be planned. And then, we could also provide whatever support is desired for work with the newspaper, work with any other media outlets to communicate this to people.
I think it's great.
So we'll be supporting this regionally with our neighbors, because we think it's a good project, and the sooner we can get to the higher number in terms of order, I think it's good for everybody. So we'll be communicating that, and obviously, we would put out a robo-call of some sort and get close to the program.
Thank you for coming in tonight.
My pleasure, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now, you know, we almost kill two birds with one stone, because you're a business in North Andover. We should have given you a certificate.
Oh, we should.
Yeah, well, next time.
After the 1,000th ton, perhaps.
Give him a sneaker.
All right, thank you very much. Any other communications and announcements from the board? Anything coming up? Any big events coming up? Anything, anybody wants to communicate?
We got a grad, graduate of Los Angeles, right?
Yeah.
The one at Northern Essex?
No, no, the one in Concord, New Hampshire.
She graduated St. Anne's, so.
She's one of four girls, 65, she's a true, she's beating these guys up.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Protect and serve.
It's a really, it's a tough program, though. They're not allowed to talk.
Isn't she a cool man?
Just keep quiet, hold down any cell phones.
Definitely. She's like, not married.
A tough program, a tough program to get through. Any other communications and announcements? Anything else? Hearing none, having none. Phil, did you have one?
We had a meeting, probably, I'm going to forget about Bob Festival, we've hardly spoken about that. I know they've been sharing that on Facebook, it's only that coming up, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to be, something else.
Looking for entertainers, actually, at the moment.
And is it too late for booths?
No, it's not.
We have a couple of entertainers. Good one, then.
It's entertainers. Me and you, Joyce, we could do a tat.
Actually, I don't know, because I've adjusted it this year.
Yeah, the best thing to do is to go to northandovermerchants.com, and there's a, there's a link out there that describes all of the, describes all the costs and all the other procedures for getting a booth, and for entertainers as well. So, if anybody's interested or wants to get some, get a booth out there, that's sort of, northandovermerchants.com.
And just as a reminder, it is to support the North Andover Merchants Sports Scholarship Fund this year, and we have been extremely, extremely successful in making sure that all kids in North Andover have an opportunity to play the sport that they want to play. So, come on out for the festival.
And it's not just that, and because you're being watched, that you had started this program, it's also for kids to get equipment, money to buy equipment, because the fees sometimes can be waived, but then, how do you get the equipment? So it's, it's a really great program.
Actually, Sergeant Daly this evening, who was promoted, is part of it, too.
All right, great.
It's a really good program.
Thank you for that. Anything else? So I think, I wasn't able to attend it, but I heard National Night Out was a great success.
It was great, it was fantastic, as always.
One of the biggest ones we've had, yeah.
Huge, it was really good.
And what a, what a boost for our public safety, to see all the people come out.
And I think what was super was NA loves NAPD and the bumper stickers in New York, seeing them on vehicles around town, and it's, it's nice.
Congratulations to all those who worked hard to put that on, I'm glad it was, because that's the police and fire and the citizens that put that on, so thank you very much. Okay, moving on to consent items. The first on the list is a vote to support the open space plan, and I think we have Jennifer and Jeanne here, or Jen?
Just me for this.
Yes, you for this, okay.
Jennifer Hughes, Conservation Administrator, just here to give you the wrap-up on what I hope is the near-final draft of the open space plan. Started back in 2013 with a CPA grant to hire a consultant to assist with the redraft of the plan. We had a lot of work to do on our property lists and making sure everything was accurate. The plan was pretty much, we had the base, but we really needed to do updates. We invited every town department to participate, we had a steering committee, we did a survey to town residents, we had a, you know, talked with all the committees and boards, and anybody who has anything to do with open space, recreation, sports, fields, got them, tried to get them involved. So, the plan was probably, pretty much the draft was done in 2014, but we had all sorts of other things to do, maps, the plan had to go out to the state for comment, it came back, we did redrafts, and so, we're hoping now we're just about there. So, one of the last things that the state asked for was a letter from the board, supporting the plan, basically.
Well, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to support the 2016 Open Space Plan as previously presented.
We have a motion in a second, any questions or comments?
Just, so if you could just tell me, so, you have the different departments in town and the boards, have they all weighed in on this yet?
Yep, everybody's seen the draft, it was circulated multiple times. The consultants that we hired set up a website, and so everybody was sent the link and had an opportunity to review. Our consultant also went out and met with each of the boards, so that their input was taken in. And same with, with residents, we held a couple of public hearings over the past two years.
We first informed the board of this during Kurt Bellavance's time, probably two-plus years ago.
Yeah.
In the draft phase, we came back to the draft, in fact, Jennifer had, I'm not sure if she came, but you may have. At the time, we presented in some draft form a couple of years ago, we came before the board and provided you a copy of that, and same kind of information.
I will tell you, there's certainly more open space, because it's like this, 247 pages.
It is, it's a very comprehensive plan, very well-done.
And we hope this time it's much more of a working document. I think some of the things in there had gotten kind of old and stale, and they were really assigned to people who really had no idea they were assigned to do them, so I think this is much more relevant.
And now, it's, it's work, a lot of work, as Dickie said, really comprehensive.
And one of the things that I'm most proud about this town is the amount of open space that we actually have throughout this town. And I quote a number to people when they, when I, when I, we talk about it, but just, what is the percentage of, do you know?
I don't know, you know what, Eric was just putting that number together for the master plan, so I think that's something you'll, you'll get to see shortly. We were trying to put together total acreage, because this plan really looks at it, it divides it up into conservation restrictions, things the town owns outright, parks are separate, playgrounds are separate, so it really doesn't put together one number that you can look at, but you can see them in the different tables.
Right, I was, I want that one number. So if you had a ballpark, what would you do?
I will give it to you by the end of the meeting, how's that? We won't put Jennifer on the spot.
I was going to say, I have to start looking through this.
Yeah, okay, all right.
And land some quick totals.
I will give you what we say.
But I agree with Selectmen, Valen Court. One thing I hear when people come to town all the time, is they just talk about how beautiful our town is, even in comparison to some other town. They just say, it's just a beautiful town, and it's because of all that open space, particularly around the lake and the trails, and now we've got all these fabulous playgrounds and fields, and I hear it all the time.
There's some really nice spots out there, everybody should get out and take a look.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments or questions? So we have a motion in a second, all those in favor of supporting the open space plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Okay, and we have the letter. We'll, I'll sign it tonight, and if you want it, we can sign it now.
I can get it tomorrow. That's great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, vote to accept the donation of fifteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars from the Kittredge School BTO toward the replacement of the Kittredge School Playground.
So Mr. Chairman, linking two items spoken about tonight. One is the playground replacement or facilities plan or master plan, and two, the open space plan, because our playgrounds are identified in the open space plan. The CPC on an annual basis makes a commitment of a hundred thousand dollars for playgrounds, except for Drummond, which will be two-hundred-thousand. This year, the hundred thousand is going to Kittredge, so any dollars over the hundred thousand have to be contributed or donated to make up for any dollars spent over the hundred. So in this case, the project came to one-fifteen, one-sixty-one, and Kittredge is donating the fifteen, one-sixty-one, supplementing the one-hundred thousand.
Which, which school was next?
It's Drummond next.
Drummond.
The big one, okay.
Yeah, so that plan covers schools.
It's been a great plan as well.
So that plan covers both, it covers playgrounds whether they were on school property or non-school property. So a number of the early projects were school projects, but then it'll switch to Drummond, and it'll be a combination of, again, playgrounds that are on school projects, property, and some playgrounds that are just municipal.
But we have a couple that have already been done, McAvoy, and then we have Applin's looking great as well.
Applin's a little further back, as you have previously given some dollars a couple of years ago to Applin. Sargent's already been done. Franklin's been done, and the McAvoy project actually was in addition to the inventory, so we get the end of this program, probably ten or eleven years in, we'll start again in terms of replacing that structure in McAvoy. By that time, we'll be at the point.
Kittredge, Drummond, Thompson.
I think that's next. And it should be noted that we're already, you know, Thompson.
What do you mean now?
No, what we've done is, oh, you mean in the next sequence?
Yeah.
It's Drummond next.
Right.
Kittredge, Drummond, Thompson.
Kittredge, Drummond, Thompson.
That's, that's two years away. That's too far away to figure out.
But I would also note that in addition to that, in addition to CPC contributing a hundred thousand, except for Drummond, two-hundred thousand, the town additionally made a contribution on an annual basis through the capital plan of fifty thousand dollars a year to do preventive maintenance item and the replacing, replacement of certain structures so we don't get to the point that, and we talked about earlier, that we start to replace on a systematic basis. You may have seen that around town. There's a few cases where we've replaced swing, larger swing structures, Kyle Thomas being one. There's a couple around town. And then we added twenty-five thousand dollars, which this board supported within the operating budget of the DPW Department, so that on an annual basis, things like the surface material below the play structures are now being regularly replaced. So in addition to the CPC, this board has supported another seventy-five thousand dollars on an annual basis. So we're really contributing, on average, a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars a year to our playgrounds each and every year, which is great. And we're not aware of another playground program, quite frankly, that comes along.
No, it's really, it's a great program.
What the end of this whole period is twenty-seven-point-eight miles, of which one-point-four is water, ten-point-six square miles, or sixty-eight hundred plus or minus acres, is public recreation open space.
Ten square miles?
Ten-point-six square miles, according to this.
Ten-point-six out of what?
Out of twenty-seven-point-eight.
Tidbits for cocktail parlors.
Is either public recreation, open space, or protected land.
Almost one-third.
I was going to say, that's a lot, because we're, what, what do we, twenty-seven square miles?
Twenty-seven-point-eight square miles, of which one-point-four is water. So the net land square, square miles is twenty-six-point-four, of which ten-point-six is either public recreation, open space, or protected land.
So more than, more than one-third. That's good.
Fantastic.
Facts for today.
Thank you for the update.
Fun facts.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept the donation.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed? No. Next on the list, we have a request to surplus some vehicles. First up is the Fire Department requesting to surplus an ambulance, I believe. Okay. Selectmen de Collegero would like to recuse himself for the Fire Department surplus of the ambulance.
Why are you buying it?
Yes, actually.
Oh, yeah, okay. His boss is buying it.
Your boss is buying it.
She asked, he just.
It's being, to clear up, to clear everything up, so it's being sold.
Just what we need.
It's being, the plan is to sell the vehicle to the City of Methuen, and Phil, of course, is the Chief of Staff for the Mayor of Methuen, so he has recused himself from this vote to avoid any conflicts in that matter. So this is a request from the Fire Department to surplus a two-thousand-and-eight Ford F-450 ambulance with the intention of the Methuen Fire, oh, sorry, Methuen Fire Department then purchasing the vehicle at a price to be determined.
So I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the request of Fire Chief William McCarthy to surplus two-thousand-and-eight Ford F-450 ambulance per his memorandum to the town manager dated July twenty-fifth, 2016.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let the record show four, and one recused. Okay. Phil, come on back in.
Come on back in.
You're not buying the cruises?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Next on the list is a request from Bruce Thibodeau, who was here and has left, to surplus a two-thousand-and-eight Chevy Silverado, which has reached its useful life for the town.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the request of DP, oh, where am I at?
You've got it.
Yeah, DPW Director Bruce Thibodeau to surplus two-thousand-and-eight Chevy Silverado as per his memorandum to town manager dated August one.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to use those terms when I retire. Reach a useful life.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yes, surplus.
Access mileage.
And I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the request of Police Chief Charles
Greer to surplus two-two-zero-fourteen Dodge Chargers and a two-thousand-and-nine Ford Expedition as per his memorandum to the town manager, dated August four.
Motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we've just surplus five vehicles. Next on the agenda is resale of affordable units. As, as we normally do, the town has given the right of first, the first option to purchase, we, I'm sorry, affordable units when they become available, but normally we pass on that and let them go into the market. So I'll have a motion.
Move that the Board of Selectmen decline the right of first refusal to purchase the affordable housing units at fourteen-oh-five Basswood Circle at Maplewood Village, Maplewood Reserve, and two-hundred Chicaring Road, Unit 103B, Kittredge Crossing.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have a request from Kathy Darby, Human Resources Director, to change the abatement rate, number of hours, and number of participants for the senior property tax workup program. I think this is another.
This is great.
So Mr. Chairman, in two thousand and twelve, the annual town meeting, we accepted the provisions of Mass General, Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Five-K, which authorized the board to set, really, the guidelines for this kind of program. Obviously, the joint interest is to expand the program and do everything we can for our seniors. The balance sometimes in this isn't as much monetary driven, quite frankly. It's making sure that the program remains effective. How many people are interested in participating? Make sure, sometimes we get a strong interest, but some folks can only work, say, twenty hours. Some folks can work longer. So it's always a function of balancing those a little bit, and our goal has been, with this board's support, last year, we expanded the program in terms of the number of people that went to nine dollars an hour and ninety-one hours, excuse me, at the time, eighty-one hours, I think, that we could, ninety-one hours I think, max. So again, we reviewed the program for the same thing, could be expanded further, and, and the result is a recommendation before the board today that we go to ten dollars an hour. We can never exceed the minimum wage, the state's minimum wage. We're not allowed to do that. So this brings us in line with the state minimum wage. The foreshadowing would be when the minimum wage changes in January of two thousand and seventeen, we may be back in next year's program seeking another increase. Folks will now be allowed to work a hundred hours at the ten dollars. So the eight-hundred-and-ten-dollar maximum abatement that they could receive today, actually, if they worked all of the hours, could go to a thousand dollars, which we think is, is important for seniors. And we're recommending the increase of the program to thirty-five participants. Today, it's thirty. So we continue to have interest, strong interest in the program, and again, we're just making sure we balance that we can get people to, to want to work in the program and provide a significant incentive.
Mr. Chairman, was last address?
There's historically been a few people left on the lottery. Again, a little bit of the concern with that just is that, again, it's this, you want people to receive the largest benefit they can. So I would expect there's, there's sometimes a number of people left on that. That's why we continue to expand it. But if we continue to expand the program, we have to make sure that we have work for them. And so we're trying to find new places to make sure that it's opportune for people to work, because if we appoint thirty people as an example, but we don't have sufficient positions, then those people get to work in, in the, in the abatement program, but they may be only able to work twenty or thirty, forty hours. We have departments in some cases where people fully, the clerk's office being an example, they'll spend all their time in the clerks, but we have to always continue to make sure we have sufficient opportunities for people to work. And that's why we are incrementally increasing the number, because we're concerned about that.
Just, I was going to say, just a correction. We're currently at thirty-five, and it's increasing it to forty.
Correct, I'm sorry. Thank you for the correction.
That's a good correction.
So it was, it was thirty last year, went to thirty-five, now we're recommending four.
It's great.
Wait, Joyce, do you have any of those people that work for the boards?
Yes.
We don't currently, but that's something that we could consider, certainly.
We want to try to make sure that everybody participates.
They could get it in one day, almost.
Two in November, yes, it probably would do that.
When they open at six and they're there.
Consider that.
Yeah, we, wherever they can work is great. We're just trying to make sure that we have meaningful work for them to do, because in order to, just because they've been accepted into the program until they find a position and work the hours, they don't get the benefit. And so we want to continue to make sure we have opportunities. I can tell you, as a community, thirty-five is a fairly large number. The forty number is pretty big as communities go, and sometimes can be a little bit challenging to make sure we have work, or could be upwards of a hundred hours' work for forty people. But we'll continue to find new opportunities to do that and come back to the board.
Well, we now have to open polling locations days in advance, right? So you might really need the votes.
Does anyone have a problem like this? No, they just written.
We're trailblazers in North Andover. Trailblazers.
I think it's a fantastic program, and it's one of those things that when we go to meet with the seniors, they, you know, they appreciate this, and they ask, you know, they ask about it all the time. So I'm, I'm very happy that we're able to expand this and, yeah, and bring more people into it and give them that option, because certainly, you know, if they want to fix income, I'm sure, you know, that's a huge help.
I'll be doing it. When the day comes.
Lunch lady. I can see you as a lunch lady.
The only person that will still be here, the only person that will still be here is Don.
I'll be declared surplus. You and I will both be declared surplus by then.
We'll be long gone by then.
So, so, I mean, what's your name?
No.
No, that's.
They're regular part-time employees.
We have to make sure, again, it's, you know, without being insensitive to you, we have to make sure the department has particular work for them and the fact that we can find the people that can do the work.
I'm going to work with Joyce.
And again, it's, it's, we should give a lot of credit to the department as they find opportunities. It's just not picking forty people and having them march off. The departments have to, library, clerk's office, amongst others. The department has to work pretty aggressively to find work so that folks aren't just being assigned and don't have work to do. So the department has been doing a great job finding additional opportunities for folks to work. This is great.
We could have greeters even, like Walmart, when they come into the new, well, I'm, I'm almost kind of serious, like when they come into the new building to direct people. Maybe not.
We'll continue to explore the opportunities.
We're going to save that one for you, when you become eligible.
You'll save that for me when I become eligible. Okay, great.
Yellow stickers.
Okay, so we need a motion on this one.
Move approval.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. All right. All right, next on the list, vote to accept easements over seventy Agonquin Road and land off Bennett Road in Boxford.
We have to vote on Boxford?
Jean, were you going to speak to that?
I, I can just help answer any question you may have. Well, the Boxford piece is a little interesting. Do we get to vote? Yes. Do we get to vote for Boxford? Yes.
Yeah.
The developer at the time actually owned a lot in North Andover and a lot in Boxford, and the intent was to provide emergency access to Boxford, which is a cul-de-sac called Bennett Road. The developer owned both lots. He has granted to the town of North Andover this easement for access and utility. So it has been recorded. It's been in effect for several years. The piece of it being accepted seemed to be overlooked. And so at this point, we just want to complete that and have it through the whole process, yes. So, and Town Council for the new lot owner of Lot One, which is on Agonquin Road, and our Town Council have both reviewed the documents, and the, the utility and access easement has been recorded for both lots.
Okay, move approval.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Jean.
Thank you.
Okay, next is an appointment for the Community Preservation Committee, appointing Tracy Watson as a member of that committee.
Thank you.
A motion, second. All those in favor?
Discussion?
Oh, discussion, okay, I'm sorry.
Just, just to thank Brian waiting for our service, Community Preservation, who's here at the beginning, and he does a great job so far. I'm not going to support this. Not that I'm not supporting Tracy. It's Tracy, I don't have a problem with at all. It's not that. For me, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with members of Board of Selectmen appointing ourselves to other boards. For example, how would we feel if I said, gee, I'd like to be on zoning Board of Appeals? Or if I said to the town manager, I'd really like to be on the planning board. I'm just, most communities don't allow this, and it's not Tracy. Absolutely, it's not Tracy.
Didn't we do it with Selectman Bill Gordon?
We did, and I, and I did vote for that.
Yes, okay.
But I have, I just think it's probably not the best practice. When you read the regulation, Mass General laws, it basically says that there'll be one member from the planning board, one member from conservation, one member from the housing authority. But when it comes to the Selectmen's appointment, it says, it says three residents. It doesn't say that we should be appointing ourselves. It's just, again, Tracy, and I think she's great. I think she would be a good member. I just would prefer it when she's no longer on the board. And it's not against her. We agree on most things, not on everything, and we both are passionate about what we don't. So I just really, I just think it's just bad procedure, a little bit too mixing it up. And I've been asked once before how I felt about somebody, a spouse, and I felt the same way as I do now. So again, it is not a vote against my fellow board member. It's just a vote against, I think is the process, yeah.
Okay, we appreciate your candidness. Okay, any further discussion?
Can I just say that my first experience ever working with Tracy Watson as an underage individual back in my many younger college-age years was actually on a project with the Community Preservation Committee. And when your name appeared on this agenda, I was kind of surprised how many people said it was a good pick, more so because it's people that I know you disagree with quite a bit politically. Ironically enough, given the last statement, and I know that they've reached out to you, too, to say that, despite past disagreements, I think that you had provided balance to the board. It's why I was, as a, as a member of the Department of Subcommittee, and I respect your, your disagreement. I thought that, I think you'll bring something to that table, and frankly, I think you, the same passion you brought to this board, you'll bring to that board, which is why I'm happy to support you for that, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I, actually, when there was an opening on CPC, I applied as a resident, as other residents do, because of the fact that I am so involved with the Affordable Housing Trust and have worked on projects that went before CPC, and think it's such an incredibly important committee in the community that I wanted to, with there being an opening with, with Brad, not seeking reappointment. I applied as a resident, again, because I thought that it would, well, my hope is that I bring something to the table from my affordable housing background, as well as my background here, and having worked with them in the past on, on a number of different projects. So that's my reasoning for it, and.
And I can't say again strongly enough, it's not a vote against, it's not a vote against you. It's just a different concept.
And is it because I sit on the Board of Select? I don't, I don't understand, I suppose. Because you've appointed a board, a member of this board before.
I did.
The chairman of the CPC is also the chairman of the planning board. The chairman of the housing authority is a member of the Community Preservation. It, it's supposed to be people with a vested interest, so it's just, I find it peculiar, but it's your prerogative.
As I said.
It's your prerogative. We can continue the conversation, and it'll get very uncomfortable for everyone, or we can let it lie.
Let's, let's move to a vote at this point.
So I say we probably should let the chairman move.
Yeah, I, I'd like to move it to a vote. I think we probably will be rehashing things. I think, again, thank you for your candid comments, and Phil, your comments, and Tracy. So I think we're ready for a vote at this point. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Okay, and as we say to all new members of committees, thank you for your service to the town. We appreciate it. And the town runs best because of people who volunteer, including all of us. So thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is to move to licensing. Motion to move into licensing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now on licensing, and you have the gap.
Oh, to my colleagues, we have.
What do you do for your computer?
You do with your, your paper.
He pulls my phone.
So in your package, you'll see attaches a license request from, on behalf of the Sixth Annual Ride for Angels to be held at the Lawrence Municipal Airport on September eleventh, twenty sixteen, between the hours of six AM and five PM. The request is for the alcohol to start being served at eleven AM. And so if anybody is here on behalf of the Annual Ride for Angels to speak to this?
I am.
Excellent. Please step forward and say your name.
I'm not Larry. Sorry, I was sent instead of him. My name is Scott Hadmark. I'm actually a resident Um, my name is Scott Havmar, I'm actually a resident in town on Chestnut Street, so, um, I actually created and organized this charity event, uh, for Angel Flight Northeast, which is out of the Lawrence Municipal Airport, um, trying to raise money and funds to help support, um, the great work that they do. And so, it actually happens to be nine eleven this year, September eleventh, um, it's a one-day, um, charity ride that happens, that we start and, uh, have it headquartered at the airport, um, and the riders come back, and then there's a big barbecue lunch, and, um, some beer is given out to those riders after they return, um, so, that's the general gist of it. We do, so we actually have, we had signs made up, we've done this, um, each year, so we have signs made up, that is a partitioned area that the alcohol has to stay within that confined area, we also have a TIPS, uh, tip-certified, um, person, obviously, that's going to be, going to be serving that, and everybody's getting, all the riders will receive two tickets, so they'll, they'll all be limited to the, to, two beers at the time, so.
Great, great, great cause, and, uh, it's always nice to have a cold beer after going on a ride, so.
That's what they said.
So I'll make a motion to approve the license request for Angel Flight, uh, Angel Flight Northeast for a, uh, one-day wine and malt license on Sunday, September eleventh, from ten AM to five PM.
Hearing a second, hearing a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None opposed? Congratulations on your.
Thank you very much, and, um, feel free to come down and have some barbecue and a beer on nine eleven if you, uh, are in the area and want to come down, we're happy to have you guys, so, thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is from Merrimack College, um, they have reflected several dates, um, including on Tuesday, August twenty-third, Wednesday, August twenty-fourth, Friday, September thirtieth, Thursday, October thirteenth, Friday, October fourteenth, Saturday, October fifteenth, um, for one-day wine and malt license for creature performance, and a one-day wine and malt license on that same day, for Saturday, October fifteenth, perhaps, is that a, is that an error, it's, they appear identical on the agenda?
Times are different.
One thirty and one seven thirty?
Oh, okay, so this is a two-hour gap.
Number six on your agenda is one thirty, number seven is seven thirty? They're two different performances.
Um, and then Sunday, October thirtieth, is the final date of their request from one thirty to five thirty. Does anybody here from Merrimack College to speak? No? This is, and, come on, and, and all departments are recommended favor, or, uh, that there are, there are no problems.
When you pay that much for tuition, you're entitled to a drink.
Move approval.
I feel like I'm paying for these.
Motion on this table, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Does that include the, um, all-day alcohol on, uh, August twenty-fourth?
That was, yeah, he did read that one as well, but that was, yeah, a little bit different, but, uh, he did read that one.
Um, do, all, all those in favor, I heard, aye, all opposed? None, hearing none, congratulations Merrimack College, and your seniors on a fun call, are you, all students on a fun call, not just the seniors? Uh, the final piece are four requests from Small Act Farms, um, these are four requests, uh, again, for an all alcohol license for Saturday, August twentieth, from four to ten PM, um, an all alcohol license for September fourth, from four to ten PM, an all alcohol license for September sixteenth, from four to ten PM, and an all alcohol license, um, on September twenty-fourth, from four to ten PM, these are all for wedding receptions, again, all come.
So moved.
I'd like to approve this, uh, make a motion to approve this, with a, a little additive, that we sent out a robocall, so people concerned remind that there's a pie that, that the little noise is coming.
I think I'll hope that no noise will be, will be.
There won't. Oh, that's what we want, let's bug them even more.
Is that a motion? Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Um, for point of information, I did speak with Small Act Farms, because we did run into a situation last week where they did not have their paperwork in time for us, for a wedding that was coming up, and it was happening last Friday, um, I was advised that it was okay to sign off, I felt very uncomfortable doing that, but I felt more uncomfortable at writing somebody's wedding, so.
Yes.
I signed off, but I did speak with Small Act Farms, um, they were under the impression, I mean, I spoke with their new manager, they were under the impression that they had to apply for, within the month that it was due, I'm not sure if there was a miscommunication, but I advised them that the second something gets on the calendar, give it to the board of selectmen, so, we are on record now, like a public meeting as well, if something's happening on March twenty-second.
They've never done that, they've always done it in advance.
Well, um, so with that being said, do I hear a motion to move out of licensing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no, we've got a licensing.
Okay, old business, none, new business, uh, public comment? No, the public has abandoned us.
Stan has abandoned us for, permanently.
Yeah, I miss Stan. Stan, come back, all is forgiven.
Be careful what you ask for.
Let's move on to managers' reports, uh, and if you'll notice, we've expanded, uh, the number of reports, so that we can really try to get an update on, um, all of things that are going on, uh, including capital projects, uh, finance, so it's a real comprehensive view, and, um, I, I don't think we'll be presenting each one of these, but if you have questions, uh, on any of these, um, these, with, these programs or reports, it's certainly a time to ask them at this point, um, so, Mr. Manager, I'll leave it to you.
Uh, as, as the chairman noted, two items, I took, uh, the feedback I received at last meeting and, and reflected on it beyond the immediate discussion, felt there was certain information that the board, uh, that certainly has been available, but something that, that the board should get as part of an agenda, uh, so they can, um, have it as part of a packet and look at it on a regular basis. Most of these, some of these reports, fire, police, and, uh, the open report, you get on a regular basis as you do the job posting logs, below that, five, six, seven, eight, nine, uh, the capital projects report, which you indicated you have an interest to see again, uh, the finance reports will be dependent upon the circumstance, in this particular case, the finance reports really reflect, um, what happened through the end of, uh, this fiscal year, the library reports will be a regular, uh, report you'll get on a monthly basis, as you will, the building department data, in terms of building permits and values and that kind of stuff.
That's.
As will the senior center information in terms of the amount of people going to projects and the like, so, and then secondarily, we've added Ask the Manager After the Reports, so that if you, as a function of looking at the reports, you have questions, not just residents have questions about what's in there, um, it gives you an opportunity to ask whatever you'd like about those particular, uh, reports or anything else.
Great. Are there any questions or any, anything that we want highlighted or reviewed in more detail at this point, uh, if you have a chance to review some of the reports, they're fairly comprehensive?
How about Ray giving an update on Town Hall?
It's great.
Let's have an update on Town Hall.
It seems like it's moving right along at a nice clip.
It's currently on schedule, um, two major setbacks, as that's noted in your reports, were, uh, delivery of windows, which hopefully, when they go there tomorrow, they're there, uh, because they were supposed to be shipped last week, and then, um, there have been some issues with the masonry subcontractor, who is actually formally working under protest, um, so the, uh, general contractor has assigned a full-time person to monitor the masonry work, um, uh, they are starting to work on Saturdays in order to make up some times, uh, we've made some minor changes in certain locations, uh, we expanded, for instance, the counters at the clerk's office and the treasurer's office, uh, we created, uh, a sit-down area, uh, outside the clerk's office for someone who needs to complete forms or whatever, so, we've made some minor changes, but nothing that would, uh, preclude them from, uh, finishing on time, and October twelfth is still the substantial completion date.
So what is the protest they're working on there?
Um, two things, uh, one, they are claiming, the, the masonry subcontractor is claiming that a significant part of the main, uh, the base bid work, uh, was not included as part of the base bid, uh, it's one of the few times I've actually seen the architect on the project, the OPM, and the general contractor all agree that, no, it was part of the base bid, and that's what you bid on, so it could be, this is just speculation, it could be, you know, uh, Monday morning quarterbacking, I didn't bid enough, you know, blah, 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 that kind of stuff. The second part is, um, uh, you know, the fire station se- section of the building was a hundred and two years old, and it appears that when the roof was done a number of years ago, they didn't, um, uh, close the connection really well, so all these years, water has been infiltrating the exterior walls of the fire station, so, basically, the water has deteriorated the mortar on the bricks, so you could just pick out the bricks from the wall. So we needed some extra work, and, um, uh, the estimate for the work was somewhere between fifty-five and seventy thousand dollars, the subcontractor came in at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, we think it was part of the, you know, let me make up some of the money, because by, by the construction statutes, they were the filed subbid on the project, we can't bring in another masonry contractor, and even if we were able to, by the time that person mobilized, that company mobilized it and everything, we're gonna be incurring the same amount of costs, so, the decision by the general contractor was for them to, to do the work under, in a time and material basis, which is the reason why they've now assigned someone full-time to monitor the time and material, that has to complete slips and sign off slips every day, and, uh, it's just part of the Massachusetts construction law that you have to live with sometimes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I forgot at public comment, I just wanted to, um, say thank you to CRL Landscape and Broder and Sons, um, for, as, if everybody's seen the new North, welcome to Northandover sign, as you're coming in from Lawrence.